Board of Education meeting to order our special call. Let's go ahead and start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Let's go ahead and start with our roll call.
Sure, President McIntyre.
I'm here this evening. Welcome, everybody.
Vice President Campbell Voitel.
Here.
Treasurer Stewart.
Here.
I'm here Secretary Meyer, Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Mabry.
Here.
Trustee Maurer.
Here.
Great, all right, we are all here. I'd like to start this evening with, starting with our purpose. Our purpose here is in partnership with students, parents, and all stakeholders. Northville Public Schools will create flexible, learning-centered school communities that advance learning and leadership within every learner while fostering the skills and dispositions necessary for success. Our vision for Northville Schools is that all students will graduate from Northville Public Schools with the skills and dispositions necessary to maximize their potential as contributing members of a global society. And our commitment to all, in Northville Public Schools, diversity, equity, and inclusion are foundational to opening a world of possibilities for and with every student. We commit to developing a community that fosters a sense of belonging, respect, and access for all in order for students across race, ethnicity, socioeconomic factors, abilities, and identities to reach their maximum potential. So the board, along with the administration and all of our staff, families, and students, we hope to accomplish all three of these things. Also like to welcome our superintendent, Dr. Weber.
Thank you.
Our central office leadership team, and we are glad to be joined by members of our Northville community tonight. Like to turn it over to Dr. Campbell Voitel for our adoption of the agenda.
Yes, I bring motion 22, that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel and supported by Ms. Meyer. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have our consent resolutions.
All right, I bring motion 23, that the board accept the consent agenda items for approval as follows. 5A, minutes of August 26, 2025, Board of Education meeting minutes. 5B, minutes of the August 26, 2025 closed session meeting of the BOE. 5C, one NHS Pon Pon High Kick Competition in Grand Blanc, Michigan, from November 1st through 2nd, 2025. 5D, schedule, a Board of Ed meeting on September 23, 2025, beginning at 6:30 PM at Old Village School, and cancel the Committee of the Whole. 5E, cancel the Board of Ed meeting scheduled for September 16, 2025, and replace it with a Committee of a Whole meeting to begin at 6:30 PM at Old Village School.
Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel. Do I have support?
Support.
Okay, support by Ms. Maurer. Our consent resolution items are typically things that we have seen under separate cover. We perhaps have discussed them at a previous meeting, so these are mostly secretarial in nature. Would like to go ahead with a motion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries 7-0. Thank you. I'll turn it over to you, Secretary Meyer.
Yes, we have all received and read emails at NPSBOE@NorthvilleSchools.org.
Okay, thank you for that. Would it be okay with the board if I gave a statement regarding our ongoing teacher negotiations? I'd like to do that this time. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, the Board of Education in Northville strives to keep our community informed with factual, timely updates on the status of negotiations between Northville Public Schools and the Northville Education Association, NEA, our teachers' union. The Board's commitment to staff and students is unwavering. In light of recent social media posts, we want to provide the community with an update on negotiations for a new teachers' labor agreement. To date, the district and the NEA have met 15 times, beginning with February 25, 2025. The parties most recently met on September 4, 2025. A mediator from the Michigan Employment Relations Commission, Merck, has participated in each of the last five sessions to help both parties reach an agreement. In a hometown life article published this past week, union leadership noted teachers want to raise, in line with the cost of living, about 3%, as well as competitive compensation to help attract and retain staff during Michigan's teacher shortage. As reflected below, the district's formal proposal to the NEA more than meets this demand. At the NEA's request, the district provided its last best offer to the NEA during the bargaining session on August 13. Under this proposal, every teacher eligible to receive a step increase would advance a step for both the 25-26 and 26-27 contract years. The step increase alone averages more than a 3% increase for each year. Additionally, the salary scale would be increased each year under the proposal by 2% in the 25-26 contract year and 1.5% in the 26-27 contract year. Thus, under the district's proposal, teachers would receive an average salary increase of 5.14% in 25-26 and 4.11% in 26-27. These average salary increases are on top of the following average salary increases in the previous three years. 22-23, 7.5 increase. 23-24, 3.5 increase. 24-25, 5.0 increase. And as mentioned, the proposed increases for 25-26 were 5.14%, 26-27, 4.11%. The following are two concrete examples of applying the district's proposal to the current teacher salary scale. The first example reflects a teacher who advances one step on the salary scale, which represents the majority of teachers. The second example reflects a teacher already at the top of the salary scale. A teacher on step 15 of the master's degree lane, the most common lane, with a 24-25 salary of $103,200 would receive $110,242 in 25-26, a 6.8 increase, which is $7,042. A teacher at the top of the master's degree lane earning $108,080 in 24-25 would receive $110,242 in 25-26, a 2% increase, $2,162. When factoring in district-paid health insurance, retirement contributions, and FICA, the total annual compensation for a teacher at the top of the master's degree lane with family health coverage typically exceeds $170,000 for a 185-day work year. It is important to note that these average salary increases reflected above do not include annual bonus payments based on the district's fund balance that have paid teachers an additional $1,800 to $2,500 above and beyond a teacher's salary each year dating back to at least 2019. Moreover, the district projects that it will continue to be able to provide such bonus payments to teachers for at least the next two years. In addition to the 5% salary increase for the 24-25 school year, the district also made a significant financial commitment to the advanced, sorry, pardon me, advanced-degree salary scales by increasing the top of each advanced-degree scale by a minimum of 15.8% for an average of $15,542. As to the district paying competitive compensation to attract and retain teachers, even after some area districts reached new agreements with their teacher unions in recent months, the district's advanced-degree salary scales are among the top in the tri-county area. Indeed, based on the administration's research, the Northville Public Schools' teacher salary scale was the second highest in the state of Michigan in 24-25. As of the end of the last school year, other recently ratified teacher agreements across our area had salary scales that were between 6% and 10% lower than Northville's. The current NEA salary schedule can be found on page 62 at this link. It will be linked in this document. Once it is posted on our website, you'll be able to see that, the 24-25 Northville Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. Northville currently has no teaching vacancies, reflecting its success in attracting and retaining staff. With its last best offer to the NEA, Northville will arguably continue to pay its teachers as well or better than any other district in the state, reflecting the Board's commitment to our dedicated educators. With respect to the district's fund balance, the Board of Education, as you can see based in this space, has been committed to excellent stewardship of public dollars over the turbulent years, including the COVID pandemic. Like all Michigan school districts, Northville benefited from one-time COVID relief funding totaling $12 million. This temporary funding not only bolstered the district's fund balance, but also has avoided deficit spending. Given the one-time basis for these funds, they were never intended to support long-term operational costs. With the COVID funding now discontinued, effective September 2024, the district faces a new fiscal reality, one that demands careful planning and restraint. Like most Michigan public school districts, the district adopted its budget for the 25-26 school year with a projected operational deficit, using the fund balance to make up the difference. This means that in the coming school year, the district expects its expenditures to exceed revenues. This is not a trend that can continue, but with the district's current fund balance, it is able to maintain, rather than cut, programs or staff. Adding to the challenge, the state of Michigan had not finalized its budget at the time of the adoption of our budget. Without confirmed per-pupil funding or assurances from the state, districts across Michigan, including Northville, were forced to budget with incomplete information. It is also a fact that unlike other tri-county districts, which received significantly more funding based upon a legislative change in state funding that occurred years ago, Northville will only receive the base minimum per-pupil funding provided by the state, currently at $9,600 per student. Per pupil. Again, it is projected that increases in such state aid funding will be modest at best, so the Board's maintenance of a healthy fund balance will be more important than ever. The Board remains committed to maintaining a competitive salary scale to retain and recruit outstanding teachers alongside excellent stewardship of taxpayer funding. In sum, the Board's formal proposal to the NEA, which will continue Northville teachers receiving among the highest comparable salaries in the state, is demonstrably more than fair and reasonable. The Board will continue its good-faith negotiations with the NEA through the Merck mediator to reach a successor agreement that is not only fair, but sustainable. We trust this update proves helpful. In the coming weeks, we will continue to communicate relevant developments as appropriate. We truly appreciate your patience and partnership with the Board, administration, and district staff. As always, we remain dedicated to advancing the highest quality of educational opportunities for all students. Thank you. All right, Dr. Weber, I will turn it over to you for our superintendent report.
Thank you so much, President McIntyre. We're going to focus on the month of September being something that I know many people in this room are, unfortunately, have had personal experience with in their service of kids as well, is something I was just asked earlier today if this is the hardest thing that I faced in my professional life. And I said, no. I said the hardest thing is losing one of our kids to the completion of suicide or across this country gun violence that's often propagated in our community public schools. So September is Suicide Prevention Month, and just wanted to bring that to light and also let the community know that we have okay to say, which is from the state of Michigan, that parents, kids, it's anonymous completely, can text in, leave a message. And I wish I could say it's something that we've never used here in Northville, but we have used it, and much love to our caring administrators who are in those positions to investigate and to help save lives. We also have a crisis text line, so any of our students can text NPS to number 741741, and that gives them the ability to be in touch with a trained person who will know what to do to help them. Also, be nice is something that I know a lot of folks in this space have taken part in, and really with a focus on how we notice behaviors in kids and each other that could be problematic. And finally, for the past three years, I've been fortunate to participate in the Color Run, and that's on September 21 at Northville High School. The Color Run was actually started by a young lady, first name Annie, who a classmate of hers completed suicide here in Northville in 2017. She chose to try to do something about it, started Color My World, which is a great organization of our students. And I would encourage anyone in the community or outside the community, I would be happy to take your money in support of youth mental health, to come join us for a walk and run. It's called the Color Run because they throw color at you and you're going. You don't have to do that. But it would be wonderful to see as much support as we could. We also did a podcast, a Mustang Moments podcast with three of the executive members of Color My World, and I think that's worth a good listen. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to this topic tonight.
Thank you. This is our, oh, thanks. Generally, we have two opportunities for public comment. At this time, I only have four cards. The green cards are back on that table over there. If we have just four cards, we can do three minutes. The Board certainly has an agenda tonight, so I want to make sure that if people have something they would like to share with the Board, we can certainly accommodate that. So we'll start with our first opportunity for public comment. I will start with the three cards, or the four cards that I have. The first card I received was for Mr. Wilk. And Matt Wilk, as you're coming up to the Board, just a reminder to the community here that the purpose of public comment is to provide an opportunity for individuals to share information and perspectives with the Board of Education. The Board will not respond to comments during this time, but please know that what you share will be carefully considered by all Board members as we fulfill our governance responsibilities on behalf of the school community. Thank you for taking the time to engage with us, and please tell us your relationship to the district, and we'll have three minutes for this first time for public comment.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I'm a parent of two seniors at Northville High School. My daughter told me that my red shirt didn't fit. I told her it was for a good cause. I'm the former treasurer of this Board, and never in my eight years and before and after that did this Board operate with their teachers without a contract. Never, not one time. We certainly never had as many bargaining sessions, and we never had to go to Merck because we understood that the teachers are the backbone of this district. I looked through your budget information, and you have a 32% fund balance, 32, that's higher than any year when I was the treasurer of the Board, and we granted our teachers raises, merit pay, bonuses, and et cetera. This is as high as it's been in decades. You have the money. That's what it's for. You're supposed to use it in that way. Going to your question or comment about the budget, the Senate budget has this district receiving $4.5 million more than last year's budget, which is the worst of the two, because the House budget gives $12,000 a kid or $10.5 million more. There's plenty of money in this budget to give a fair contract to the teachers. The House budget does not include categoricals. I, as the parent of two kids, am happy to make my kids peanut butter and jelly sandwiches in lieu of free lunches so that we can have the flexibility that our teachers can be able to get a raise. I hope that our Board president isn't conflicted. As you probably have heard, she's running for office. That's new. That's never happened in our district before. I hope she supports the budget that best benefits Northville, not the budget that her, people that are endorsing her are supporting. I understand also that our superintendent took his raise in advance of the completion of the EA contract. That also never happened. Mary Kay was entitled to raises, and specifically in meetings told us, "I will not take my raise until all the EA contracts are done. It's a bad look." She's right. It is a bad look, a very bad look. The Board, you guys should have stepped in and stopped that. You should have stepped in and stopped it. We should not be spending money on outside interests. We should be spending money on making teachers feel motivated. We should not be spending money on third-party consultants, which I heard that's a first for the Board, too. We should make our teachers feel appreciated. Teachers and administrators have left this district in droves, including some very, very recently. You should be asking why. Between 2013 and 2020, when my second term ended, we were able to give raises, merit pay, increases, and grow our fund balance. You could take the most crass corporatist view of public education, which I do not, and still believe that your machine, your greatest asset, that's the people in black back there, should be your focus. From 21 to 2021 to 2023, you put $7 million in the bank. It's time to spend that money to make sure our staff doesn't spend one more minute with the disaster that this process has been. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to start with some guidelines for our public comments tonight. Like to be sure that during public comment, we are not having a lot of booing and cheering. I appreciate that we waited until the pause. We definitely want to hear what everyone has to say, and we'd like to make sure that we can have an efficient meeting tonight. So thank you for your comment. Next, we have Jessica Ritter.
Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Jessica Ritter, and I'm a proud special education high school teacher in the district. I absolutely love my job, the students that I see every day, and get the pleasure of watching grow and mature over the years and the people I work with. I've co-taught in almost all core content classes throughout my 10 years of teaching, taught every high school grade level, and enjoyed every second of it, but there is one important concept that has stuck with me throughout the years that students are taught even in their early reading lessons: show, don't tell. We often hear the words we value our teachers, and I believe many of you truly mean that. But as teachers, we live in the space between what is said and what is shown, and right now, what we're seeing in these tentative agreements, what we're being told is the last and final offer from the Board, doesn't match the appreciation we're being told we have. Other districts in our areas are offering more, not just financially, but in how they're showing teachers they matter. They're investing in their people, and it's working. Their vacancies are filling faster. Their teachers are staying longer. Their contracts are being approved before they expire, and their morale is stronger. Meanwhile, in our district, we're losing good educators, not because they don't love teaching, but because they can't afford to keep doing it here. I've seen colleagues take second jobs. In fact, I have a second job. I've seen others leave for neighboring districts just to make ends meet, and I've had difficult conversations with fellow teachers and even students about what it means when a great teacher decides to leave for a district right next door to us mid-year. We show up early. We stay late. We buy our own supplies. We buy supplies for our students. We make sure all students are prepared because we want them to be as successful as they can be. We care deeply, not because it's in our contracts, but because it's who we are. But caring has to go both ways. We're not asking to be rich. We're asking to be respected in a way we can feel, not just in kind words, but in pay that reflects the reality of our work, our experience, and our worth in comparison to other districts right next door. If this district truly wants to attract and keep high-quality educators, educators that engage students, educators that accommodate and modify material to meet students where they're at, educators that care about your child's mental health, educators that can tweak and create materials to appeal to the kinesthetic learners, the visual learners, the auditory learners, educators that love teaching, care about your children, and show it every day, then it's time to stop just telling us we matter and start showing us. We want to stay. We want to teach here at Northville, but we need to be able to afford to and feel respected and appreciated. Let's be a district where teachers don't have to choose between passion and paycheck. Let's lead the way, not lag behind, in showing that we value those who shape the future every single day. Thank you.
Okay, next I have Michael McLaughlin, and second on deck will be Mr. Tabor.
Had known I was one of four speakers, I would have put more time and cobbled together some words. My name is Michael McLaughlin. I've been proud to be a resident of Northville for the last 10 years. When I relocated back to Michigan from Fairfax, Virginia, and was looking at communities, my number-one consideration was the school system. That was it. I had two sons. My youngest, I mean, my oldest went through the private school system, but my youngest has been part of Northville Public Schools since the first grade. He's now in the 10th grade at Northville High. In middle school, some of the teachers recognized he had some learning differences, pulled us aside, made recommendations, built an IEP, recommended tutors, checked in regularly with emails and conferences. Their current commitment made all the difference, well above beyond what they probably should have been doing. I'll always be grateful. That's what makes this district special, is the teachers. Right now, they're being asked to teach larger classes, spend their own money on supplies, incur the weight of educating our community's most precious resource without the security of a contract. We live in a fortunate community. We pay a lot of taxes, happy to. We support, I support every ballot initiative that supports education because we know that's what makes our community great. Even when my oldest wasn't going to public schools, I knew my neighbors' kids were. We have a strong fund balance. I'm in investment banking. I look at numbers for a living. The numbers make sense. I'm terrible at algebra. I can't figure out the y, but they can figure out the x. Ask them to work without the contract. The biggest thing is it's a distraction. It sends a wrong message to the very people who make our schools what they are. We've invested in our schools because we know strong schools make a strong community. Our teachers have done their part. Now it's time to do ours. Thank you.
Mr. Tabor. Is he still here? I think I only have one card after this, so we'll read this, after this will be Christine Klemek, and then if there's more, we'll hold those for our second opportunity for public comment. Thank you, Mr. Tabor.
Of course, thank you. I'm here once again to advocate for a fair and equitable contract for the over 450 Northville educators that I represent as president of the Northville Education Association. Earlier in your social media post, and again tonight, the Board stated that they're committed to negotiating in good faith and also committed to finding a resolution that is fair. I'm here to remind you that actions speak louder than words. Last week, my team sat in this very room. We sat here for three hours. We didn't see a single person from the district's team. We didn't talk to anybody from the district's team. The mediator didn't have anything to bring us from the district's team, so we wasted three hours. Our next meeting, October 14th, so we're going to sit for another month doing nothing. Not only that, but on top of that, I can see why they didn't have time to meet with us as they were crafting your comment from earlier this evening. Along with that, you hired a $400 to $500-an-hour attorney, labor attorney, which to me speaks more about protecting the district's fund balance than it does working with us, because we don't need a $400 to $500 attorney to talk about and negotiate. Anyway, my team stands ready. We can settle this thing tonight. We can work tonight. We'll stay late. We'll work tomorrow. We'll work whenever you want. We don't want to wait till October 14th. Earlier, last meeting, Ms. Katikos asked you if you saw us, if you heard us, and if you cared. I know you see us, and I know you hear us, and I even know you care. The question is, do you care more about your obscenely large fund balance, or do you care about giving us a contract that respects the work we do? Thank you.
All right, our last public comment for tonight, at this first opportunity, is Christine Klemek.
Good evening. Thank you for canceling your Committee of the Whole meeting to hold a special call board meeting to not only help answer some questions for the community and the families who are not privy to attending negotiating meetings and don't understand what the holdup is with this. From what I can see, there is unanimous support for our teachers. We love our teachers. An expiring contract should never come as a surprise. My concern is this: how many meetings were actually held to negotiate teachers' contracts before they came back to work? To hear that they sat through meetings and sacrificed summertime and time off before anybody says anything, teachers are not paid year-round, they are nine-month employees, so that's not it, sacrificed their time continuously outside of school over the summer to come to meeting after meeting after meeting, and then to hear that nobody even showed up? That's not negotiating and meeting. That's actually quite appalling and does not align with the Northville standard. That's actually quite appalling and does not align with the Northville standards for our students, for our families, or for our staff. Have you, as a board, physically come to the table ever to talk to them, or meet with them, or even hear what the holdup is in this negotiation? From what we hear, they aren't asking for much. Not much. Nobody is going to break the bank or bankrupt the district for what they are asking for. These teachers, this union endorsed every single one of you sitting on this board because they believed that you not only supported, but encouraged, and were there 100% for the teachers. I don't doubt that you do have tremendous support and love for education or the staff. But right now, I can tell you, as a community member, as a parent of three children in this district, it is not showing. I know that that's not how you feel, but you are going to have to pony up and come to the table and really put the actions with the words. Our teachers are the heart of what makes Northville Public Schools exceptional. Every time the district has asked them to rise to a challenge, they have not only met it, but exceeded it. They accepted cuts and freezes in pay to rebuild the fund balance when it fell below 5%. In 2020, let's not forget, they reinvented education in order to meet the demands of isolation and led the way in online learning. They dedicate countless hours outside of the school, preparing lessons, purchasing supplies for their students, and furthering their own education to ensure they teach the highest level. It is important to note, the majority of NPS teachers and masters, I'm going to run it out of time, are above the master's level. Despite these conditions, our teachers continue to deliver results that consistently keep NPS ranked among the top 10 districts in the state. Year after year, they show up for less and take more. They've consistently come to the table. As you continuously, yes, I understand.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to number 10. I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Stewart. We have some agenda. Oh, I take it back. We need to move to number nine first. And we will have a second opportunity for public comment, but we need to move through our board agenda as well. All right. I am...
All right, I am bringing motion 24, that the board authorized the administration to award a three-year contract to Savas for I-Lit ELL English Language Learners for K-12 students to provide multilingual learning curriculum materials totaling $18,696.75, funded by the general fund as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel, supported by Ms. Meyer. Any conversation about this? I think that might, okay, thank you, Ms. Keith.
I just wanted to actually make a correction. The work that was done in seeking out the curriculum and the research that was done last year, I wasn't fully involved in, so I did a little homework and realized that I have an error in here. It's not K-12, it is a secondary curriculum. Elementary is continuing with the National Geographic curriculum that better meets their needs for the foundational level that the elementary students are at. The I-Lit ELL actually focuses more on speaking and writing, which is what we're finding our secondary multilingual learners are struggling the most with, which is why they really felt that this was the best fit for meeting their needs. The National Geographic curriculum, they previously did not focus on that and was just not meeting the needs of what the students are engaged in and having to do in the high school curriculum and those secondary levels.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you for that explanation. Make that correction. Yeah, we'll make that correction. 612, okay, thank you. Make that correction. Anything else that's important for us to know?
Sorry, bear with me, I'm just looking at my notes.
It's okay, yeah, all good.
I think the other, a couple of other things to highlight, that this particular curriculum has digital scaffolding in it. It also has embedded PSYOP strategies, which are evidence-based multilingual practices. And what we found in our district, when we evaluated our, we discourse historically, we were lowest in the speaking and the writing area, which is why this curriculum hopefully will align and help support the growth of our students.
Awesome, all right, thank you for bringing that to us. All right, let's go ahead with a vote, then. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, I would like to turn it over to Treasurer Stewart. Thank you.
All right, I would like to bring forth motion number 25, that the Northville Board of Education adopt the resolution in support of a 25-26 school aid budget as presented. I'll go ahead.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion properly presented by Ms. Stewart, supported by Dr. Campbell Voitel.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas Michigan's constitution requires the Michigan legislature and governor to pass an annual school aid budget for the exclusive purpose of funding public education. And whereas Governor Gretchen Whitmer signed Public Act 160 into law in 2019, which states that the legislature must pass and present general appropriation bills for the upcoming fiscal year to the governor on or before July 1st. And whereas local school districts in Michigan are required by law to pass their own budgets for the upcoming school year by July 1st. And whereas the Michigan legislature has failed to meet their July 1st legal deadline to pass a school aid budget appropriation bill or make any meaningful progress towards doing so. And whereas the Northville Public Schools Board of Education was forced to adopt a budget for the 25-26 school year without key funding information due to the ongoing lack of a state budget. And whereas the fiscal year 2025-2026 school aid budget continues to be delayed by political battles that are unrelated to school funding or the needs of our students. And whereas the ongoing delay in funding certainty has already impacted our ability to best plan for the support our students need and deserve in the upcoming school year. And whereas every day the budget continues to be delayed by lawmakers will only worsen the negative impacts on our schools, staff, and students this fall and beyond. And whereas comments by lawmakers that suggest the school aid budget can or should wait for other budget agreements to fall into place ignore the critical needs of our students. So, the Northville, that was the resolution. If passed, we would put in place. The Northville Board of Education, through consideration of this formal resolution, is urging state lawmakers to immediately pass a spending bill that fully allocates the entirety of funding meant for our schools in a manner that supports the needs of each and every student in Michigan. This resolution highlights several facts, including: The Michigan constitution requires the legislature to pass the school aid budget by July 1st. This deadline was missed, violating legal responsibilities and undermining public trust. School districts like Northville are legally required to adopt our budgets by July 1st. We've done that work. The absence of state-level funding information has forced Northville to make critical decisions without knowing how much funding they will receive, jeopardizing financial planning and stability. The resolution demands that lawmakers stop using the school aid budget as a bargaining chip in unrelated political negotiations, such as road funding. It emphasizes that student needs must come first, not be sidelined by broader budget disputes. And through this resolution, the Northville Board of Education will be urging immediate passage of a full and fair school aid budget that prioritizes students and ensures districts can operate effectively.
Any conversation anybody would like to have about this particular resolution?
I'm glad to see it being included in our packet. I'm glad it's something that we're looking to support. I think it's, we're delayed, right? The state is delayed, long delayed. We had our budget ready. I believe June 24th is when we voted on that and approved our budget without the pertinent information that we need. So, making a budget on a guess is something that is challenging for a district already. We don't get our per-pupil count until count day, which generally happens later in October. That's how we get our actual, you know, number that we know that we can bank our student budgeting on, or district budgeting. Anything else anybody would want to add?
I know that multiple districts have been doing this as well, trying to get the word out. I know the MASB, MASA is also advocating on this and has been for a while, MEA. So, we've all the educational, so I think it's good that we're also putting our voice in there.
Yeah, agreed. Anything else? Okay, we'll need to do a roll call vote for this, then, for the resolution.
Okay, Meyer, I am a yes. Frazier?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Campbell Voitel?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
All right, great. Motion carries, 7-0. Wonderful. Let's move along, then, to agenda item number 11. Ms. Mauer, I will hand that over to you. Oh, okay. Yeah, so if you go ahead and read the motion, then we can put our names on. Yeah, read the motion, and we'll get support, and then we'll have the conversation.
First time at this row.
I know, it's okay.
I'd like to bring forward motion 26, that the individuals we will list below to be selected to represent the Northville Public Schools at the 2025 Michigan Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly at the Grand Traverse Resort on Thursday, October 23rd, at 7:00 p.m.
Support. Okay, awesome. All right, we have a motion properly presented by Ms. Mauer, supported by Ms. Meyer. So, yeah, this is an annual, an annual agenda item that we discuss. Are there people who would be interested in attending this delegate assembly? It sounds like a cool opportunity with MASB, which is the Michigan Association of School Boards. So, Mr. Frazier, okay?
I'm...
You're interested?
Interested.
Okay. I'm also interested. I don't know if others are interested.
I, that's my working week and weekend, so I cannot attend, but I'd be happy to be an alternate.
Okay.
I cannot attend.
Wonderful, okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I could probably go.
Okay. Yeah, we can always, okay, so, all right, so the four people that would be listed as delegates, or, sorry, yeah, delegates are Mr. Frazier, Ms. Mauer, Dr. Campbell Voitel, and then Ms. McIntyre. And alternates, Ms. Stewart and Ms. Meyer?
No, thank you. I cannot attend.
Okay.
I will be working.
Are you able to be an alternate just as listed?
Do we need all seven of us to be listed?
I think we need four. We always have, yeah, so we just need four delegates, and then two alternates. Yeah.
Okay.
We can go.
In the alternate time period, I will be at the Grand Traverse Resort and Spa in October and Thursday. Sounds lovely.
Okay, super. All right, let's go ahead and vote on this agenda item. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, this is our second opportunity for public comment. I think I have, oh, do we, oh, yeah, do we have any added agenda items?
Fair enough.
Okay. I have one more comment card. Am I missing, oh, two more, okay. First, we'll have Leslie Curie, sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. And then, secondly, will be Grat Dalton.
So, I didn't anticipate speaking, so it's very thrown together off the cuff right now. But I just wanted to say, regarding this statement that you made in the beginning, President McIntyre, I just wanted to point out that even though you stated that it was for only 185 days of work, we all know that teachers aren't working a 9-to-5 job. They're coming in early, they're staying late, they're doing a lot of things on their own time. And also that I have never, in any of my experiences in my field or any other people's fields that I'm familiar with, seen where the salary equivalent includes the healthcare and retirement contributions in the salary as a whole. So, I thought that was very strange to present it that way. For myself, I am a parent of three Northville students. One was diagnosed early on as special needs, and I was very happy with the treatment that we got through the Northville School District. He was involved in the early-on program through the county, and then he was in the early childhood intervention program here at Northville. He was one of the first members of the braided special needs classroom, if I'm not mistaken. And I was very pleased with how all of that happened. It was a great experience, and he's doing very well now in fifth grade, and actually came home with a very impressive test score today to show me. So, I was very happy with all of our experiences there. I, myself, am a mental health provider, and I just want to point out that we have a lot of focus on mental health in our district, and we should. It's important. It's not so taboo anymore to talk about it in public, which is wonderful. We need to talk about it a lot. But we need to focus on the mental health of everyone. I'm also a member of the Wellness Committee, a newer committee that, I think, was developed recently, and I know we have a board member on the committee as well. And I think it's important to point out that when we were deciding on what our Wellness Committee was going to do, we were determining who we are there to benefit. And without any doubt, every single member of the committee, every group we came into, the primary focus was the students, and secondary, it was staff. And I feel that the way things are going right now, we are totally eliminating the staff, mental health, wellness from that. And I feel torn to be a member of a committee where we say we're focusing on the mental health of the staff, and then we turn around and we treat them the way they are being treated right now. And I don't want to be a part of that. I don't support that at all. I also think we need to think about the mental health burden that we're putting on our staff of not feeling appreciated. The dichotomy of having to come to work every day and feel undervalued. And in light of the new diagnosis of trauma, which emphasized lasting negative impacts of events on a person's body, mind, and overall well-being, moving beyond a single event to include chronic stress, complex traumas, and historical trauma, I think what I've heard through other commentators today, what I've read, what I've been researching since all of this came to light, is not healthy for anyone in that situation. And I urge you to think about that as you consider moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. All right, the last card I have is for Grat Dalton.
Hey, everybody. I'm Grat Dalton. I was going to tell you my address, but it's the wrong community. So, I don't live here, I don't have kids here, I don't have kids at all. I live in Royal Oak. I represent, south of Square Lake Road, over 7,432 public school workers. Like you all, my reputation is on the line at this point. You can ask anyone south of Square Lake Road, who's Grat? What does he stand for? What does he believe in? And they're never going to say, he's going to lie to you. They're never going to say he's going to pound the table at the bargaining table because I just don't do that. I think our members deserve more than that, and I don't do that. And I think you all know that. I care about RJ, I care about you, I care about your students. I care about your cult team. I love working with them. The statement, I just, I want to address a few things. I think that you took the highest-paid member and the highest level and cherry-picked that information for your community. It's wrong, and I think it's misleading. I will also tell you that you don't get the choice to bargain in good faith. It is the law. You don't need to tell your community members that you're going to bargain in good faith because that's what you have to do. It's what I do. What my members are doing here now is also part of their right. We're not doing anything illegal. I sat in the office when my colleague and predecessor, Kim Edwards, sat there with Dave Rogers in 2010 and 11 and took excruciating concessions. Not only did they do that together with my help, because I was the coordinating council chair at the time, I didn't have the luxury of being assigned to Northville, but I worked for Blount Hills in Birmingham, but I was in the office. It was the most painful experience of my entire career, is saying to a colleague who you all know and trust and respect, also who has the same reputation in Oakland County, as well as Chandra, that we have to do this because you're going to get, you're going to get taken over. There's, we're going to, we're in trouble. We ratified that agreement at, it was the hardest thing we had ever done. We did it together because we had to. Your last best offer didn't ratify because my members are savvy enough to know that that's not time to take such concessions. If we get there, we will, just like my predecessor before me did in ways that were difficult but also kept you afloat. I don't, it is in my best interest, and it's not really about me. It's about the members I represent. I am not trying, and neither are they, trying to make you guys go bankrupt. I don't want Highland Park schools. Like, think about that for a minute. That is not what I want. I want a living wage increase that is commensurate... that for a minute. That is not what I want. I want a living wage increase that is commensurate with something that I can ratify, period. And I've been very honest with your team and you all. And I know that you know how to get ahold of me. I care about you and I appreciate your public service. I know that this position is difficult, and I appreciate your time.
We have the next public comment from Stacy Katicos. Stacy's in the room?
Yes, she's on.
Okay.
Good evening, guys. Well, I am Stacy Katicos. I'm actually going to be speaking on behalf of Christine Klemek, who was unable to finish her remarks earlier.
You know what? We do, we do not yield our time. These are your remarks, these are her remarks. I'm confused.
Can I share the remarks on behalf of a community member who was unable to finish her remarks earlier?
Okay, feel free.
Okay, thank you so much. So here's where she left off. It is important to note that the majority of NPS teachers hold master's degrees or higher, and a high number of general education classrooms exceed 30 students per class, excluding pre-K, kindergarten, and special education. Despite these conditions, our teachers continue to deliver results that consistently keep NPS ranked among the top 10 districts in the state. Year after year, they show up for less and take on more. They've consistently come to the table. Can the same be said for those negotiating on behalf of the district these last several months? Families choose to live in Northville first and foremost for the schools. We pay thousands in taxes and approve every bond proposal that supports everything from buildings to technology and everything in between. This contract is not just another item on the agenda. It should have always been the number one priority. Educators with this level of experience, advanced education, enthusiasm, and proven effectiveness are not easily replaced. They have other options. There's a shortage, as we all know. And we risk losing them if they're not valued at their worth. There's a profound difference between counting down the days until retirement with pride and a fulfilling career, and counting down simply to survive until you can leave. Sadly, I'm beginning to hear far too much of the latter these last few years. When teachers reach that breaking point, it is our children who ultimately lose out. I firmly support our teachers and anything less than 3% guaranteed steps and a calendar that matches no more days than previous with zero attempt to return to school for students before Labor Day. There are already many extra days in the academic year beyond the state required number. It is time for the district to recognize and preserve the assets our teachers are by coming to the table genuinely, offering a fair contract with a minimum of a 3% increase and guaranteed steps moving forward without pages of contingencies. Anything less jeopardizes not just our teachers, but the equality of education that defines Northville. And those are my thoughts as well for what it matters. Thank you so much.
All right, we have one last one. She's having a... Yeah, right, okay. I just want to clarify for the community that we typically offer people one opportunity for public comment related to the same topic. So just to clarify that, I have one more card for Sarah Prescott.
Hi, all. Sarah Prescott, mom of a kiddo at Hillside. It's, it's, I miss some of you. I miss a lot of you, even though it was hard to be here all those years. And I know this has to be really hard, and I don't really actually want to be doing this because I know how hard service is already, and coming in through this isn't something I ever had to do. I just, I don't want to tell you what to do, but if there were any of you who were wondering how you would change your mind, I would give you my perspective and my, the wisdom of whatever. You wouldn't do it publicly, you wouldn't break, you wouldn't throw each other under the table, you wouldn't do anything untoward like that. If you wanted to, four of you is what it would take. An enclosed session, you would start to ask hard questions like, why have always our numbers trended down? We're going to be in 18, 15% fund balance in two, three years if we do this. And yet, that's not been what's happened. And I know you've heard me say that year in and year out. This isn't new. You would ask hard questions like, why am I elected here, but I'm not supposed to speak to the public? Is that really you? You would ask hard questions like $400,000? Between what they're asking and what you're asking, what you're offering, the city of Northville, the town of Northville is not going to like to hear that. $400,000 should not cause these poor people to be here on their Tuesday night. That is, that is not a good idea. And I really don't want you guys to be pilloried in the public, but I don't think that that matches what this community shows you it wants. I know this is really hard, and I know you must have been given advice that you cannot afford this, because I know your hearts. And I know you did not come here to upset teachers or make them come here on Tuesday nights and leave their kids at home. So you must be feeling like you can't afford this, and you can. Because $400,000 is a drop, and the kids deserve it, and the teachers deserve it, and we can afford it. We have given the bus drivers that kind of raise. We have given the, the, the custodians that kind of raise. That's one year of a superintendent's salary. Okay? That is not that much money. It can be afforded. And put your money where your mouth is and where your values are. I know your hearts, and I know you do not want to do this, and I don't want to be here urging this, because I, I know it must be hard for you to hear me and pile on. And I don't, I don't want to do that to you, but I, I think you need to go back to closed session, and I think you need to find your voice, even if it shakes. And I think you need to rethink. Thank you.
Is Dory here? Okay.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Dory Wizniski. I teach at several buildings within Northville Public Schools. I just wanted to say, your presentation on teacher compensation assumes that we've even reached the top of the pay scale. This is my 22nd year of teaching, with 17 of those years being in Northville, and I'm still not at the top of the pay scale. Northville Public Schools keeps moving the goalposts. When I started teaching at this district, we had an 11-step pay scale. A few years later, Northville Public Schools added quarter steps to that scale. It would have taken a brand-new teacher 44 years to reach the top of that pay scale. Fast forward to my 22nd year of teaching, and we have a 16-step pay scale, which still includes half steps. I have still not reached the top of that pay scale. Many of us can only dream of earning the figures that you shared in your presentation, which by the way, failed to mention all of the concessions that we've made over the last two decades. Thank you.
Okay, we have no more cards. Thank you all for your public comments.
That's not true. I handed in another card.
Is it a different agenda item than the teacher contract?
The board policy did not have such an exclusion, because that exclusion would violate the open media check.
I believe, is that correct, Ms. Peck? Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate you.
I would make very long, I apologize. I don't like doing it twice. Once again, Matt Wilk, former board president, father of two seniors. I walked outside and I wanted to know what the delta was between what you were offering, what the teachers were asking. And I know that we have a $32 million fund balance, and I expected it to be a very large number. It wasn't. It was $400,000. That, by, I'm not, I'm no mathematician, but that seems to be 80 years to draw down that amount of money from our fund balance. That, that delta is $400,000. The custo, the, the bus drivers got $300,000. Last time I checked, there's more teachers than bus drivers. You guys have repeatedly asked this community to pass the hat. You've asked these teachers to defer and, and take less. $400,000? You, this is a waste of everyone's time here. You guys should go into closed session right now and say, guys, this is too much. We're done with this. Here's $400,000. Go on, teach, have a great year, teach our kids. But I, I expected the number to be millions and millions of dollars, because we used to have those fights at times. And you have to negotiate with what you've got. But $400,000, folks, this isn't worth our time. Give the teachers what they deserve. Thank you.
I'm going to make a last call for public comments. We do have more agenda items. Is there anyone else? The green cards are over on that table. I definitely want to make sure everyone gets heard. I just keep getting all of these one at a time. So for sure, is this our last public comment? Okay. I think it's Drew Augustine. Please make a...
Thank you. Andrew Augustine. I am a father to twins at Meads Mill. Coming from a different angle, everything about the contract has been said. Nothing else needs to be said. I'd like to address something that, first off, thank you. The K through 8 zero-cellphone policy is great. It does not go far enough. Lisa, I reached out to you. I have not heard back from you. There's a researcher at California Berkeley who uses Project Reboot. It's at California Berkeley. It talks about the detriment of cellphones in high schools. In short, cognitive learning is decreased by 33% just by having a cellphone on the table face down. It's a fact. Having a cellphone on a desk reduces your cognitive ability by 33%. How much more productive could our teachers and students be if we said, K through 12, your cellphones are away? That's it. If you want a resource, I'm more than happy to give an introduction. Dr. Youssef, a researcher at California Berkeley, is more than welcome to do a call with you, to do a Zoom presentation to you, to show you all of her research. This is a very important thing to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any, thank you all. Any questions or comments from board members?
I do have one. The Parks and Rec for Northville is sponsoring a Northville Night. It's going to be at the Marv Gans Park Friday, September 26th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And Marv Gans is the park at Beck and Five Mile, all the sports fields there. There's going to be live music, food trucks, bouncy houses for kids, and Parks and Rec is asking that we spread the news. So, thank you.
All right, thanks.
I'm glad you said that, because I don't think we'll have another board meeting before the Victorian Festival, right? Because it's, now it's going to be a cow. Is that correct? Because the Victorian is on the 19th?
Correct, yeah. Next week will be a committee, yeah, will be a committee of the whole meeting.
Just a point of recording, that that will be the Victorian Festival is on the 19th for our third graders and...
The Braided.
Needen, yes, on Friday, the 19th.
Well, I have a, an additional resource to share in recognition of September being Suicide Prevention Month, and that is the Michigan Department of Public Health has, has sent the communication out emphasizing that we also have a statewide 988, a suicide and crisis lifeline. So that is textable as well as phone call and their, and they also offer support a chat. So whatever means of communication, if you are in danger yourself or if you know of someone who is struggling to, please know that there is, there's a 988 crisis line that you can access in this state. And it's an, it's an important, I'm glad we have a whole month. It's not just a day, but that we focus on the vulnerable in our community as well as in our schools. Thank you very much, Dr. Weber, for making that the, the point of your comment. So very important. It's a very important concern in our community.
I have a couple of updates. I attended the first Northville Cares meeting of the year last week, and there's a lot of great information coming there. Some stuff going on at the high school. Mentally Strong Mustangs is off and running, which is a group to provide mental health support for our student athletes, our artists, our drama kids, band, orchestra, really anybody who's doing something after school. So that is up and running, and there will be more coming from that as time goes on. Color My World, I know Dr. Weber already mentioned this, but Color My World is having their Color Run September 21st at 11:00 AM. I believe this signup link is on the high school website?
Yeah, and you can also...
One second. You can also follow them on the Insta, which is the Instagram.
Yeah.
And I know they have their, their stuff there as well, and I think they'd be really happy to see a public response to that. The Mustang Moments podcast we did was just, I can't emphasize enough how I wish everyone could listen to those three students we have, and how they, they just perfectly talked about the stresses that they're feeling in their life and what they have, and what they want to do to help change it. So thank you for, both of you, for lifting that up again.
And that is their only fundraiser for the year, so that's huge. Also, Mustang Mentors is up and running at the high school, pairing our freshmen with the older kids to kind of get the feel for what it is to be a Northville Mustang, just starting out. Couple other things, New Hope had a representative there, New Hope Center for Grief Support. They do a ton of really great work in the community. Right now, they're offering an eight-week teen group on Mondays. There's also a concurrent parent group, and this is for anybody who has lost somebody. My niece benefited from this, as well as my brother after the loss of my sister-in-law. So it's really a fantastic organization. They offer Family Fridays, where you can go have dinner, kind of hang out, and kids get to kind of be with their own peer groups to work through some of that grief. They're also now in Northville this year, offering school-based grief support. So they will have different clinician, not necessarily clinicians, but people who are trained to go into the schools themselves and help provide grief support as necessary for a variety of reasons. Hagira Health was also there, and they actually now have a Behavioral Health Urgent Care, which is great. It's not quite a crisis center, but they have a ton of resources that if you need to go there, they can connect you to other things. They're also soon going to open a six-bed residential facility called Treehouse, which is for, this breaks my heart, but for six-year-olds and up. And that, I mean, we just need, we need that in, you know, all of these communities. So Hagira has a lot of great supports there. Lastly, NYN was there, well, NEF was there as well. And NYN, they're going to be sponsoring their Kona and Community on September 8th at Millennial Park. So just lots of good things coming from Northville Cares.
Today, I went to Meads Mill, and I met with Mr. Lambden, and he demonstrated the Smart Pass system for, for me, how they're using it to support, you know, all the students. He showed us the different interfaces that students see, what teachers see, what administrators can see, how they're using it to support IEP students, and a bunch of that. And he just wanted to let me, he wanted me to let you know that if any of you want to see a demo, just let him know. He's happy to share it with you. Kind of interested, though, to see, like, in a couple of months, like, maybe what the high school, I imagine, is going to have a lot more data. So I'd be curious to see what, what they're going to have.
Yeah, I'm excited. My middle schooler brought that to me. He's like, Mom, I got a plan out when I use my passes. And I was, I was like, this is amazing.
At the football game Friday, I checked in with our high school admin, and they reported that it was working well, and that they began that. And the emphasis on that, of course, is safety. I'm grateful that the board listened to our administrators, who really, if you can imagine, a half a million square foot building, important to know where 2,400 kids are. And so really grateful. Thanks for talking to them about that, Ron. I encourage the rest of the board, and you come into interaction with our Hillside, Meads, and high school folks, just to check in, see how it's working out. But from the folks I talked to Friday night, that they were pleased with it as well.
We had a, a letter to the board expressing some curiosity on the Reno that's going on at Hillside. And I just thought that it was relevant, I think, to our focus on mental health and all of the activities that are going on, Meredith, that you just referred to, and also the, the report from Dr. Weber. But I just wanted to clarify, should anybody be equally curious of what's going on? And that is going to be a community space for the use of our collaborators, our, the many collaborators around mental health, that can come in and use that space to meet with students or have... with students or have small groups.
I mean, New Hope is, again, an organization that I did not know about three years ago before I came here, I wasn't familiar with it. And to your point, Kim, I mean, and I'm so proud that I serve beside board members who have went out and given days at their camp, and, but their space is so incredibly limited, and is a community good, offering some additional space to them for large group meetings and things like that, were important. Also, NEF will be going there, an organization that's contributed, I think, $3 million since their inception to schools in Northville, and NEF has also contributed many things that we, you know, believe in collectively for years, well, before I was here as well. So thanks for lifting that up. I think we did get a question on that, and reno, and really, the renovation there is about a secure vestibule, so places like New Hope can use it in the evening time and not have egress into the, the building itself.
And that's a grant-supported reno?
100% grant-supported, yes, ma'am.
I wanted to talk about, yeah, Victorian Festival, there's a parade next Friday night, is that right? And the school district will be participating in that parade as well. We're excited to celebrate our students and looking forward to that.
Get our fascinators.
Right, yeah, exactly. That's next Friday, right? Okay, awesome. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, then let's move on to our, our next agenda item.
All right. I have motion 27, that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Public Act 267 of the Open Meetings Act under Section 8(c) negotiations.
Support. Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel, supported by Ms. Stewart. This will also require a roll call vote this evening. Frazier?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Campbell Voitel?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
And I am a, yes. Meyer. Okay, we will adjourn temporarily, we will adjourn this open meeting, we'll move into closed session, and when we come back out of closed session, we will most likely gavel out. Oh. Are you passing them down?
Yeah.
And Lisa, I will also not pass them down, as far as one of your signatures.